Alrighty, well I just want to thank everyone for coming out tonight. My name is Junior Izanu, McGrath Prairie City Council member representing the entire city as an at-large member, and I'm very grateful just to have the opportunity to serve our wonderful city. And I'm grateful to have each and every one of your support. I'm looking forward to your questions tonight and hopefully it will give you some information. So I want to start off by acknowledging some of my council members and the mayor this year. To my left, we have Mayor Ron Jensen. We have our city manager Steve Die. We have council member Kurt Johnson. Council member John Lopez. Police Chief Daniel Sesney. Grand Prairie ISD Order Trustee Brian Par. We have Constable Sandra Lee from Tarrant County. I don't know where she's at, back there. We have Dallas County Clerk John Warren. I'll acknowledge, oh, we have Fire Chief Robert Fight in the back. I'll make sure to acknowledge any other dignitaries as they walk in. But I just want to thank y'all for being here. So to start off, I just want to show y'all our agenda. I'm gonna give the welcome, I'll allow Mayor Rogerson to speak afterwards, and then we'll go by departments and allow all the departments to give a report today. So first and foremost, I want to go from our last town hall meeting, which was December of 2021. So so far, since December of 2021, we've increased the homestead exemption by 2.5%. Some of you may ask, what exactly is a homestead exemption? So two ways to help homeowners save money on their property taxes is by exempting them through a homestead exemption, a senior exemption, senior tax freeze, or cutting property taxes. When you have a homestead exemption, it directly affects homeowners rather than other people that own land, their commercial buildings, churches, schools, and other things. Those get the property taxes, tax cut, but the homestead exemption only affects homeowners. So you save more money through a homestead exemption. So with this upcoming budget, you're gonna see a decrease in your property taxes as a result of the increase of the homestead exemption. So let's say, for example, you own a home that costs $100,000, just for example. Rather than paying property taxes on the $400,000, you will pay property taxes on $87,500. And this comes from your city side of the property taxes. As you all know, property taxes hit your city, hit the city, the county, and the school district, and other taxing entities such as the hospital or community colleges in your area. So we're helping our homeowners save money on their taxes that way. April 12th, we had Via Grand Prairie launch, and I'm gonna continue to give some more information about that later. But Via Grand Prairie is our microtransit ride-sharing system that allows our residents here in the city to get around for a very cheap price, between $3 to $4 per ride. We had the Dolores Huerta Road dedicated, acknowledging a famous civil rights leader for a Hispanic community and for working people. And lastly, Grand Prairie will be recognized and receive an award as a scenic city at the TML Conference coming up in October. And I'm gonna give Councilmember Kurt Johnson a big shout out for making that happen, wherever he's at back there. And I'll provide some more information about that as we continue. It's already explained, the homestead exemption there. So Via Grand Prairie, so as you all know, here in the city, the great city of Grand Prairie, we do not have any form of public transportation. So we're blessed that the mayor and the council members prior to myself and others getting on had a vision to bring some form of equity and transportation to the city. We launched this program on April 12th, 2022. And what it does, it allows anybody that's within the city of Grand Prairie, whether you live here or not, to access an app called Via Grand Prairie. And the van driver will come and pick you up, maybe not in front of your home, but on your block, and take you anywhere within the city for $3 per ride. Let's say you're a college student that's attending UTR or Tarrant County Community College. It will allow you to travel to that school and come back home, $3 per ride, $3 going, $3 coming back. If you go to Dallas County Community College Mountain View Campus or Dallas Baptist University, it will take you there for $4 and take you back for $4. Via Grand Prairie operates from Monday to Saturday, from 6:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. And it's a great option, a great choice for those of us in our community that may not be able to drive, may not want to drive that day, or just can't afford the high gas prices at the moment. So it's a great opportunity. So recently, we got back, this month, a survey back from Via conducted through, speaking to people that are taking it here in the city of Grand Prairie. Some responses that they got is that 72% of the people that are riding on the Via vans don't own or cannot afford a personal car at the moment. Over half of the riders that are riding via Grand Prairie's household income is beneath $50,000 a year, making car ownership very difficult, especially in this economy at the moment. 46% say that they're now unable to travel a lot more because of Via Grand Prairie. And 1 in 7 of every rider says that Via Grand Prairie is really their only way to get around. So it's truly helping a lot of people out. And since April, we've had 38,000 rides, 6,000 people individually have taken it at least one time. And average wait time is about 20 minutes, so I don't think that's that bad for a $3 ride. Y'all agree? And this is a very powerful quote that they sent us over, and I think it kind of shows the importance of a program like this. We had a resident state that, "I don't have a car, and my family members work long hours." So in order to get to things like the school and work in the gym, I would need to take a service like Uber and Lyft, but it's way too expensive, so they really appreciate using Via. Because if you look at Uber or Lyft, even to go from here to the Epic might be a $10 or $15 ride. But V will pick you up right here, take you to Epic for $3. So that's the power of a program like this, and I just want to give a big shout out to our council, our mayor, and our staff for making that happen. Can we give them a hand, please? Next, I want to speak about the Dolores Huerta Road dedication. Many people don't know who Dolores Huerta is, but she was a huge civil rights icon and leader, she's still alive, that worked with Cesar Chavez to help out farm workers, farmhands, people working very hard. She co-founded National Farm Workers Association with Cesar Chavez. And back in April, April 30th, we dedicated several blocks on Second Street to be renamed the Dolores Huerta Road. And John Lopez and Mike Del Bosky were fundamental in making that happen. So if we can give them a hand, I know John is over there. It's definitely a blessing to serve alongside great people that work to get things done, and just being able to support them is a blessing, so I just want to thank them for their work. Next, I want to speak about the Scenic City Award, which will be given to Grand Prairie next month in October. Back in February of this month, Kurt Johnson and myself attended a TML Conference in Sugar Land, Texas. And during the opening session, they were speaking about all these new cities that ain't better than Grand Prairie that were getting this Scenic City Award, and Kurt and I was like, "What's going on?" So we decided, well Kurt took the initiative to send an email right there on the spot to our city manager Steve Die, staff got on it immediately. And now Grand Prairie will be acknowledged at the upcoming TML Conference, which is the Texas Municipal League Conference, where all the council members and mayors throughout the state of Texas come annually to exchange ideas and learn more. And this happened because of Kurt Johnson's fight to make it happen, and Grand Prairie will be acknowledged because of our high-quality scenic standards for our public roadways and public spaces. So getting that done for our city, so can we give Kurt Johnson a hand for that? Some upcoming, some highlights from our upcoming budget, fiscal year 2023 budget, is that we're gonna cut property taxes again this year. So as you guys know, last year was the first time in 20 years that the city of Grand Prairie cut property taxes. So in this upcoming budget, we're gonna cut property taxes for the second time in two years, while increasing the homestead exemption. So you're gonna definitely see some decrease in your property tax, hopefully, whenever you do your bill next year. And also, we're gonna increase the minimum wage for all city employees to $17 an hour. I want to give a big shout out to our city manager Steve Die. This man truly inspired me with that, because I know how difficult it is in this economy right now to raise wages for working people. And he took it upon himself and had the support of our council and all the staff to make this happen. So if you're working in the city of Grand Prairie full-time, you're gonna work with a livable wage. So can we give Steve a hand, please? And lastly, I just want to hit on some community engagement, things that we've all gotten accomplished this last year, being on council. I was elected June 5th of 2021, and truly it's been an honor of my 23 years of being on this planet to be able to serve on this council. Yeah, I'm only 23, I know. But I've had so much fun with it, I've been blessed to serve with council members, with staff, and serve a community that is here, that truly embraces our diversity, and embraces our differences, and comes together to celebrate that. And I've just been so grateful and thankful for the work that you guys do in the community and being able to support and make things happen for everybody to come out to, has been a blessing. So I want to highlight some of the things that we have done within the last year. This summer, in July, I, myself and the Epic, we held the Councilman Izanu Epic Showdown, which was a community basketball game between the police department and teenagers that live here in the city of Grand Prairie. People had a great time, they had a lot of fun, but also gave our students and our young people here a different perspective on the police. When you're able to play ball with them, you're able to be in a different environment, and just get to know them as people, it provides a more humanizing effect, allows you to see them more so as not just an authoritative figure, but as a friend, a companion, someone that shares a great city with you. So that's why we wanted to do that, and of course, we beat the police, so sorry Chief Sesney. I held my second annual community picnic and school supplies drive. This year, I was pushed by residents in the city to incorporate a school supplies drive with the picnic, being that it's important, as we're getting ready for the school year, to give other people the opportunity that may not be able to afford school supplies to start off the school year well, especially our children and some of our teachers that are buying all these school supplies, it was important. So it was a great turnout, and you can see in the picture down there of all the school supplies. It's even more beneath the table that was donated by people that live here in Grand Prairie that understand the importance of supporting our community. And the next day, we donated all the school supplies to GPISD. Shout out to Brian Par over there for accepting, helping me bring it into the building. Nah, it ain't on me, it's all of us. So I appreciate y'all's support. And now, when the school year started, we had dozens of students, dozens of teachers that had access to school supplies and able to start the year out without having to worry about this. So that was a blessing. So if we can just give our community a hand for that, please. And lastly, we're gonna hold our GP Halloween Fest again this year, so more information on that. If you follow me on Facebook, you'll see it, or any other social media. But next, I'm gonna acknowledge Mayor Ron Jensen, let him come and give us a little short update.
We've got lots going on, I know. Any, it was an RTC meeting today, and Michael Morris said, "You know, half the people love all the people moving in here, the other half don't." It's a quandary. But we're smack dab in the middle of the best metroplex in the US. Everybody wants to move here, there's jobs here, there's everything here. I can get to any, I'm a sports nut, I can get to any sporting event in 20 minutes, most of them in 10. People can't do that elsewhere. So people are coming here because it's a great place to live, work, and play. And finally, in the city of Grand Prairie, we're having things that I used to have to drive to Arlington to do. I'm gonna announce some things on September 23rd. Set your DVR for Good Morning Texas on September 23rd, 9 o'clock. I'm gonna announce three things that is just gonna add to our entertainment area. You can start writing down notes of what you think it is. It's, it's, it just fits, you won't have to, if you're, if you have a teenager or a young child that wants to have a birthday party, you're not gonna have to go anywhere but Grand Prairie anymore in your life. Boulder's fixing to open up. Boulder Adventure Park, Play Grand Adventures is already there, Epic Waters, main event, these will add to that. Before I leave, I want to talk about two things that I think this council has done in the past that really epitomize what a caring council and staff ought to be doing. Councilman Izanu, you mentioned it, we do not have DART, we will never have DART. That was voted out in the 1980s, and that penny's gone. We use it for other things. But this council has stepped up, and the first thing we did is the Grand Connection. Long before Via, we stepped out and we spend about $2 million a year on Grand Connection. If you need dialysis, you don't have a way to get there, you're an elder that has to get to your doctor, you make an appointment, and we've been doing that for years. If you need more information on that, just Google Grand Connection or go to gptx.org. And the other one, Junior already mentioned it, Via. I have to admit, we waited to see how it was gonna work in Arlington. And I told Mayor Williams this, and I told Mayor Ross this also, I saw him today. We're fixing to have a joint meeting with Mayor Ross and Mayor Evans from Mansfield. Via, Arlington, if you watched, tried different things. If you recall, they did buses first, connected around town, it didn't work, then they did some other things, ride shares. Via works. It's a kind of a play on Lyft and Uber. The difference is, it's not door-to-door, and it's a share ride, which you can do on Uber. You know, you can get real cheap on Uber. If you wait a while and do the share, that's one of the deals, but this is a share ride, but not always shared. I mean, they're not gonna wait, they wait a while, there's a window that they wait to see if they can get another person on that same route, so they can share a ride, but they're not gonna wait an hour until they, they will come get you by yourself. Take advantage of Via. It's an asset. Utilize it. I appreciate my council, those that, and I've gotta mention Brian. Brian's on the school board, but, and I don't, I don't watch what they vote, I don't care, they run a good school board. Brian, here's what I'm gonna say about Brian. Brian shows up at things. I've told you that before. As a school board member, I appreciate you showing up at things. Because when you do show up, people can say things to you about it, and you're a principal. You get it, you know, so you're in the public, thank you. All of us, all of us, every one of us, respond to our emails quick. Every one of us, Steve knows that, because he gets them all day long. You send them to us, we get it to them, we get something, we get it taken care of. Email us, call us. I love town halls, but don't wait till the next town hall to ask us if you can get something fixed. Email us, we'll get on it. Thank you, thank you, Junior.
Next up, we have Police Chief Daniel Sesney.
Does anybody else see the irony in having a loudspeaker in the library? Just asking. Sorry, Peter, but it's kind of cool. Okay, so I'm under strict orders to be quick and concise, but I'm gonna stick around and answer every question that you may have. I'm told we're doing questions at the end. So let me hit my talking points, and then I'll be right out here should anybody have any questions, until all the questions are answered. First of all, crime is way down, that's the good news. We were recognized as being the second safest city in the Dallas-Fort Worth area, behind another city, it's nowhere near as jazzy as us as far as I'm concerned, so we'll recheck the numbers. We are, also got recognized as being one of the safest cities in the United States of America. Pretty proud of them. We have 11-year crime lows in all of the following categories: robberies, burglaries, thefts, and adult thefts. 57% crime reduction since 2010, that means 4,600 fewer victims of crime in the city of Grand Prairie. We also started this year, this past year rather, our very first Spanish-speaking-only citizens' police academy. That's something we're real proud of. We also started a new program, one of my favorites, called Blue Shoes. What that does is, we're putting brand-new shoes on the feet of children in the GPISD that are in need. So we haven't hit all the schools yet, but my goal is to get every baby in the entire city, but working toward that end. So in fact, we have another one that's coming up in September, into September, I should say. We just got the Christine Blue Ball Act through the legislature at the last legislative session. That attacks teen dating violence and gets that into the schools and helping kids recognize what teen dating violence really looks like. And those of you that knew about Christine Saturday losing her life some time ago, our assistant chief was at that call, and it really moved him to actually author the Christine Blue Ball Bill and really harass a lot of our state legislators and get that across the finish line. Also, we had the very first GPPD sports camp, that is a free sports camp for all the kids in Grand Prairie in the summer. If you have kids that are interested in playing sports and want to come out with the cops and play sports at no cost, please consider that next summer. That is my talking points, I think I kept it within the appropriate amount of time without getting yelled at by my bosses, but I'll be out here should you have any questions, thanks, I appreciate it.
Next up, we have Fire Chief Robert Fight.
Always love following the police chief. Sorry. We have a great brother and sisterhood in our department. We, you know, the fire's a little bit different, we don't, we don't really have statistics, we don't track fires up and down, we don't compare with other cities, we really just focus on one thing, that's the human being sitting in that seat. That's really what we're about. So we try to provide you the lowest insurance rating that you can if you're a homeowner or a commercial business owner. We try to provide you the best ambulance service that we can provide to you. After that, we just try to help you, we take care of your problem. So I'm going to be here for questions, there's really no need for me to update you on the fire department. This is a very at-large meeting. We are focused a little bit down south at 287 and 360. You probably don't realize that is all the city of Grand Prairie that we share with Mansfield, and there are thousands of rooftops going in that we have to cover with fire protection. So that's really our main focus right now, along with hiring. If you know of anybody who wants to be a firefighter, please send them my way, because we cannot get people hired. I know people don't want to be teachers, I don't want to work for the city, I don't want to be police officers, I promise you, they don't want to be paramedics either. So I'll be here for questions, just want to keep it short and simple. I know I was much quicker and much shorter than Danny.
Thank you, Chief. Next up, we have our Economic Development Director Marty Weider. We give him a hand, please.
Thank you, council member, and what we're gonna be doing is transitioning over to another presentation, because we'd like to be able to give you guys somewhat of an idea of some of the things that are going on in our city. In terms of economic development, naturally, our job is to try to generate wealth, to be able to accomplish the kind of things that you heard the council or the mayor discuss, to be able to put us in a position so that the property taxes can be decreased like they are projected within this budget for the second consecutive year, to be able to do some of the other things, to bring in both the property tax, new development, as well as sales tax revenues, so that we can provide the services that benefit our citizens. And so some of the things we'd like to share with you about, of some things we've been working on that are coming to fruition include a couple of things the mayor mentioned earlier. I want to show you a little bit about Boulder here in a second. But let me run through, and let's see, we're gonna see how well we go with this. You may have heard and seen that, this is something that's been in the works for a while, that the original AirHog Stadium is being converted to the first cricket stadium basically in the entire nation. The first one that's been created, there was an existing one that's smaller in Florida, but this is gonna have capacity of almost 10,000 seats, permanent seating, it can be expanded up to 20,000 for major events. We had the group associated with Major League Cricket, that's what they're gonna call themselves for the league itself, kind of like Major League Soccer, as well as USA Cricket. The men's and women's national teams will be based here in Grand Prairie. And we'll host a lot of games associated with that. They're gonna play a thing called T20. If you've studied cricket, the long game takes several days, this'll just be three hours, thank goodness. And so, it'll just be three hours. And so we're thrilled to see that we've got the potential to bring a sport here that's so popular. If you're not aware, it's the second most popular sport in the whole world after soccer. There's a tremendous following for it. Manhattan Construction Group, who's been involved in several stadiums in North Texas, is in the midst of doing the reconstruction. This is an elevation that's been put together by HKS Architects to show what it's gonna look like at build-out. There's not only gonna be improvements to the stadium to convert it, but there'll be enhanced suites, there'll be new premium seating and increased capacity, as I mentioned. It will host these kinds of matches, as well as USA International Games and other international events. In addition, we will be the corporate headquarters for USA Cricket. We will see them put in a high-performance training center. There's a, it's proposed to be a venue for the 2024 World Cup. The International Cricket Council has decided to place that in the US and the West Indies. And as the way things are going with new stadiums being constructed right now, it's quite likely we may have one, if not the only, stadium in the United States to work with the West Indies to host about 55 matches. So that means we've got the potential to kind of show, you may have heard about the FIFA Soccer World Cup two years later in 2026 coming to this region. Well, we're gonna be able to show the region what this can be like ourselves, and we're excited about that and the potential. So there's lots of other events, there'll be a minor league cricket team, there's one based in Dallas now that'll move and be based in Grand Prairie, may hold on to that Dallas name. There's, as we mentioned, the World Cup venue, other non-cricket events will be there too, not just sports festivals, community events, private events. And so we're thrilled that they, after a long period of time, made the commitment to come and invest here. Let me see if we can show you a little bit.
Baseball is out, cricket is in at the AirHog Stadium in Grand Prairie. On Monday, work began on a $20 million makeover that will convert the vacant baseball area into a world-class venue for Major League Cricket.
It's gonna be converted from a baseball diamond into a cricket oval. Cricket field shapes are all different than baseball, so a lot of the work going on around us now will be to expand the field and then turn it into that full oval with a dedicated natural turf pit in the middle. We'll be expanding the seating, there'll be about 8,000 seats here, luxury boxes, premium seating, club seating as well, renovations for the sports bar, we expect complete construction by the end of the spring. So by next summer, there'll be professional cricket played out here in Grand Prairie.
The first professional cricket player of both conferences, he can't wait to get on the pitch in Grand Prairie.
I grew up watching it as a little boy, and the seed was planted early on that, you know, I wanted to play cricket professionally and be a part of it, so once this Major League started and, you know, televised and all the local community can come along to a game and experience, hopefully those seeds can be planted and they can follow up with the game and see the excitement that cricket is, especially T20 cricket.
Cricket is enjoyed by millions around the world and gaming fans in Texas. Major League Cricket is banking on the sport's popularity for a new venture that will feature teams in major cities across the country. The Red Bank AirHog Ballpark will host the Texas franchise, and the league has secured a long-term lease for the stadium of the city of Grand Prairie. Official name of the local team and other details will be announced later this year. For more information, visit majorleaguecricket.com.
What's nice about that, and I'll transition to another thing I want to tell you about, is that we've got a lot going on just a little bit south of there on the President George Bush Turnpike. It's kind of wrapped all around what opened up earlier this year in the new Chicken and Pickle. And we're thrilled that you're going to see, you may have seen some structures, they'll show you a slide here in a minute as to what it looks like. But we had anticipated seeing several new restaurants be built there back along the water, as well as two hotels, and we've told you a little bit about this before, but we wanted to begin and give you a preview of the signage that's gonna be associated with one of the first restaurants. It's gonna open up here in the coming months, Loop 9 Barbecue, started by the man who created Chili's. And so we're thrilled to see, next to the water, several restaurants that'll loop around the site, right adjacent to the hotel, a 13,000-square-foot conference center, 10,000 of it usable. And so that'll, that's an exciting thing. And what we also like to, in addition to all that, is that, you heard the mayor mention earlier, within walking distance next to Epic Waters and Play Grand Adventures, is that we're going to see the first-of-its-kind Boulder Adventure Park open up here, quite likely in early October. They're nearing completion, let me show you a little bit about them as well.
Grand Prairie's latest entertainment attraction is taking shape in that big central. Old Adventure Park will offer rock climbing, zip lines, rope courses, slides, synthetic ice skating, adventure nets, and more. And all the fun happens inside a massive inflatable dome designed to withstand any type of Texas weather. The building is rated as if it's a permanent structure, so it meets all the regulations, the building code requirements for a traditional building. The way it works is that, just under pressure, there's two different pressure modes. There's the normal pressure, and then there's what's called the storm mode pressure, where it actually puts more pressure in, creates the surface to be a little bit harder to be able to handle those rougher conditions. The venue was scheduled to open this summer, offering something for all skill levels. Take the ropes course as an example, there's four different courses, we call them the bunny slope, the green, the blue, and the black. It's designed just like a ski slope, so the higher you go, the So the higher you go, the more difficult it gets. Boulder is the newest addition to Epic Central, Pacific's ambitious, world-class destination, but already includes the epic waters indoor water park, the epic arts, fitness, and entertainment center, the summit, active event center, and Playground Adventures. They've recently opened as the first retail location at Epic Center, and six more restaurant sites are under construction. Two connecting hotels and a conference center are also being built. When it's completed, officials say it will be a one-of-a-kind dining and entertainment experience that emphasizes Grand Prairie's family-friendly fun culture. You can keep up the progress at Epic Central by visiting the city's website and gptx.org.
Certainly, what's taking place plays into what we've tried to advertise. We don't do a lot of this, but we do try to get the word out to other restaurants and retailers that are already on the corridor that, you know, they ought to take a look at Grand Prairie. Too long, we've been forgotten or overlooked. And so we feel like it's important to point out to them, the signs of the times are, as the mayor likes to say, this is Grand Prairie's time. So we're doing our best to always make sure and remind people of that. The mayor made mention, by the way, of what's coming up on September 23rd. Pay close attention. There'll be a couple of things that'll be shared. And so we can't go into detail, but it's going to be relating to the site that you see there. Let's, let's skip over to another part of town, just so you've got an idea of something else we've been working on real quickly before we wrap up about the I-30 frontage roads. As you know, they're nearing completion. They'll all be done before the end of this year. And the city is about to begin construction. And I don't mean to be stealing any thunder from, from Gabe Johnson, but we'll, we'll talk a little bit, maybe a little bit about Stadium Drive. Stadium Drive is about to be, it's been let, is about to get under construction. What it does is open up development of the land that was master planned several years ago by Omni Plan Architects for what they entitled the Gateway at Grand Prairie. So it's going to open up land here to the west of where Stadium Drive is going to be, to be developed with the first six and seven-story wrapped multifamily, very upscale, next to corporate office facilities in the future, similar to what was in, basically envisioned, what council embraced several years ago, as Omni Plan reps made comment of. This can be a corporate downtown, the only one between downtown Dallas and downtown forward. And then lastly, you may know that the council took action this past year to begin purchase of the former Calvary Baptist Church downtown. And we put out a thing, a very unique structure called a request for expressions of interest, had eight different groups respond, and the council's in the midst of reviewing those and talking with them. It relates to not only the Calvary site, but the former annex, the original annex of, basically City Hall of the city, what used to be the Finance Administration Building, right across Main Street from Firehouse Gastro Park, very close to Zavala's Barbecue, who, you know, made Texas Monthly Top 50 Barbecue just almost a year ago, last October. And so it gives us a chance to play off of what else is there in our Main Street and really begin to generate the types of development we need to foster more restaurants and retail in that corridor. I look forward to responding to any questions you have when we get to the end, and we'll pass the ball off to the next presenter. Thank you, council member.
Thank you, Director. So I want to make sure I acknowledge some other dignitaries that walked in in the last few minutes. I know we have Grand Prairie NAACP President Angela Lucky. I believe she's somewhere in the back over there, so please give her a hand. We have Arlington NAACP President Lisa Simmons. Terrance County Justice of the Peace, Kenneth Sanders. We have Dallas County Justice of the Peace, Mike Jones. This one right here is very special to me. We have the second-ever black council member that served the city of Grand Prairie. He's here. His name is Lee Alcorn, so give him a hand. It's very important that we recognize those that paved the way, that allowed people like myself and others to get here and be able to serve a city as wonderful as Grand Prairie. And Lee Alcorn did that. Other council members, allowed myself, Kurt Johnson, and Jack Winheden to be minority council members, John Lopez, Mike DeBosco, the minority council members. It's important that we acknowledge people that made it here before us and allowed us to stand on their shoulders to do this work now. So I'm just grateful for them. Next, we have our Public Works Director, Gabe Johnson. So we can give him a hand, please.
Thanks, Junior. That's hard to follow up those notices. So I'm Gabe Johnson, Director of Engineering and Public Works. I want to talk about a couple of, probably the most complaints that we filled, let y'all know how to respond to them or let us know what the issues are. Two of the biggest complaints we hear about are potholes and sidewalks. I see a lot of people shaking their heads. Yes, we realize we have a lot of potholes. We ask that you notify us when you see those. We don't, we don't typically have staff driving out looking for issues. We are typically responding to problems. So it's really easy for the potholes. If you go to the city of Grand Prairie website, type in potholes in the search bar, it would actually take you to a webpage. And then there's a reporting form on there. There's a, there's some other things you can report, but specifically there's one for potholes, street lights that are out. So please take advantage of that. Let us know. We, we try to respond to potholes in a pretty, less than a week, we'll have somebody out there to do something temporary at least. And maybe temporarily, we can do a permanent fix, but at least get it to where it's not drivable and jarring as you drive past it. Other complaint receiver, sidewalks. Sidewalks all over town are a couple of different issues we have. Either the sidewalk has completely deteriorated to the point we have cracks and fractures, and it's just decimated. Or we have what we call trip hazards, where you get a lot of shifts in the soil. Grand Prairie is notorious for high plasticity clays and see a lot of shifting and weather changes and water. So we ask you, either you can report those kind of through the same avenue or call or email. I'll give you my card outside. You can always send it to us what the process is. You, you report it. We come out and look at it. If it meets the trip hazard criteria, we will come out and fix it. The one caveat I would say is, is we, we only budget an X amount of dollars per year to fix the sidewalk. So once we have spent that money for the fiscal year, we're typically waiting for more money. But we put it on a list and we systematically knock those out as we go through. So that's a, that's a program we get a lot of calls about. The last thing I wanted to touch on is a program that's been in the works now for three or four years. City Manager Diaw was very instrumental in getting it going. We had a lot of complaints up north, so we're, we're starting an alley clearing program that is not as much of an issue the further south you go. And I'll give a little history. When, when lots were platted back in the seventies and prior to the seventies, a lot of times utilities were placed in the backyards. So now all the utilities are placed in the fronts. So water, wastewater's up in front. So those remnant plats where we have alleys or rideaway easements typically are not maintained. And it has been for years. A lot of council District One, council District Five, council District Four, that's where we see the most of the problems. So we have executed a contract to do an alley clearing program. We're going to allocate money each year to go clear cut it. Now, it's not going to look like a park when we're finished, but it will at least be cleared and accessible. And there are a couple of different scenarios that we deal with. If it's an alley, it's a little different than a rideaway. So we will, we will be communicating those. If we're out touching an alley that you back up to, there will be information that we give it to you before our contractors roll in. I'll let you know what's going on, when they're going to do it. Typically, they're going to clear cut it, and it will be mulched by the time they leave. There are some issues in some of those alleys where you have fences that back up, or no fences, or cars, or sheds, or whatever the obstacle may be, we'll have to work around it. But our goal is to get it cleared so that it's just not a wild jungle in the back. So I hope to see that rolling the next 30 days. And we will, kind of like sidewalks, we will run that program until we run out of money, when the next year's funding cycle comes, we'll keep it going. So I will be out here afterwards answering any questions. If you have anything, hit me up. Thank you.
Thank you, Director. So I want to echo something that Director Johnson just stated, that's that if you ever see a pothole, you see an issue in the community, please make sure you refer to one of the council members, whether it's me, Councilmember Johnson, if you live in Westchester, if you live on the Terrance County side, South by 20, Councilmember Lopez, and all of our council, you'll see them on the website. Earlier this, last week, I had a resident contact me on Twitter, speaking about a pothole issue near Delores Wayther Road. So I was able to get that information from the resident. I forwarded the pictures and information to our Director, Gabe Johnson. And Gabe let me know a few days ago that they're going to begin repairs on that road in two weeks. So that's how quickly it can work sometimes. But we can assist our community. We can make our community a better place without your input, without you notifying the council members and the mayor as to what concerns and issues you have. So I have my cards in the back. You can follow me on Facebook, as I stated prior. You can follow me on Instagram, Twitter. I'm active on social media. You can even check me out on YouTube if you want. So please make sure to let us know what's going on in the community so we can better serve our city. Deal? Sounds like a plan. All right. So next up, I have our Parks and Recreation Director, Dwayne Strong. So give him a hand, please.
Thank you, Councilmen. Thank y'all for coming tonight. This is, this is, it's good to see a full crowd. I'll, I'll be very quick. We've got a lot of good information for you. I've got a lot of stuff back on the table. And emergency management was fantastic to provide some bags. So you can put all the park bling that's out on the table before you leave and take that with you. But there's some good information out there that you can take with you, so we don't tire up a lot of time. Some of the special events, since this is at that large, we're just going to kind of cover some, some basics. We did print out a schedule, bigger, bigger font than what's in your, your agenda. It's out on the side too. But just a couple is, we got our street treat on Halloween night for the kiddos. That's back at City Hall this year. We moved it to Epic Central because City Hall was under construction. It was at the farmer's market. We outgrew that, so now we're at City Hall. Pause in the Park is Saturday, September 17th. So we got that. Kids Fishing Day is, is on October the first. And then we have the Haunted Camp Out. It's, it's tents at Epic Central on the grand lawn. And, and so it's got the haunted because it's, it's on October the 22nd, 23rd. So that's a lot of fun. And then there's a lot more events, and I really want you to take advantage. Parks Department does this for our citizens, so we want you to, want you to attend. Some of the projects that we've got going, I want to highlight, is trying to cover the entire, entire city. We try to give love to a little bit of everywhere. So we've got some upgrades to our basketball courts. Our basketball courts, they get restripped and color coding put on every, every few years. We got enhancements to our landscaping at the summit, upgrades and some improvements to our outdoor pools, replacement and upgrades to city park signage. Some of our, our city parks, the signs are, need to renovation. I've got some big projects that we're working on. We've got Tyree Park, Turner Park, and Metha Mia Park are all kind of on the same schedule. We've done master plans with those. We met with the, with the neighborhoods, and we developed a master plan, and now we're into our construction documents. All those will be bid here in the next few months, and construction should start on those, those three parks at the beginning of the year. And we're supposed to rat all three of those parks up about the end of next year. So we're, we're getting some, some really good things going on in those parks. We've got Fish Creek Linear Park. We've got a, a new restroom going on there. So that's going. And then the last thing I want to talk about is Prairie Lights. That is, that, that's our big one coming up. And so we got a couple of neat dates. Is on Saturday, the 19th, and Sunday, the 20th. It's called Sneak a Peak. And this is where we have the serious runners or the fun run. But that's when the public gets to come out and get a sneak peek before anybody else gets there. That's a good fundraiser for the scholarship program. Then we got cycling with the mayor on Monday, the 21st. You get to ride your bicycles through Prairie Lights. You don't get to do that very often. We start on Thursday, which is about Thanksgiving night, and then we wrap up on the 31st. So thank y'all for your time, and I will be available afterwards for any questions.
Thank you, Director. You know, it's, it's quite interesting because I sent an email to all of our staff and directors that will be giving presentations today. I asked them, please keep it to no longer than 10 minutes. But they're beating me today. They're wrapping up in three to five minutes. I'm like, my goodness. The football season, you're right. That's why, that's why. So I appreciate y'all being very concise and direct. Next up, we're going to have our Code Compliance Director to come and give an update. But before I let him come up, I want to let you guys know that after he's up, we're going to allow Q and A questions. We're going to go row by row, allowing anyone that has a question to raise your hand and ask the question. And I'll repeat it into the microphone. So those that are watching on Zoom can hear the question and ask a question if they have one later on too. So that's how we're going to do it. And again, thank you all for being here. I truly appreciate it. But next up, we have Assistant Director of Code Compliance, Ryan Simpson.
How's everybody doing?
Very good.
All right. I'll see if I can set the record to be the shortest here tonight. Okay. So I wanted to cover a few topics tonight. The first of which is how to submit a code complaint. Like Gabe was saying earlier, you know, we rely on the citizens to, to report a lot of these issues to us. We have 13 code officers that work out in the field, and that's for the whole city. So they, they try to get around as much as they can, but they can't be everywhere all the time. So we really rely on citizen input to get these issues addressed. So the easiest way to report a code complaint, go to the city website, gptx.org. Right at the very top of that page, you'll see a link to report an issue. It'll bring up a page. It's got a whole slew of different types of issues that you can report, and not just code-related, but pretty much anything else. And there will be a form that you can fill out, and that'll go to the appropriate people to get it addressed. You can also call us, or you can email us at codecomplaints@gptx.org. All that stuff goes to the same place, and so we'll get that address. Wanted to give an update on short-term rentals. So some of y'all may know, City Council passed new ordinance in May to add some additional restrictions on short-term rentals in the city. So I'll cover some of the highlights of the, of the new ordinance, not an all-inclusive list. I will have some packets that I'll put out at the back at the end that has a little bit more information, if y'all would like it. So short-term rentals in the city must be permitted. There's a $480 permit fee now. That's, that's a new requirement. Part of that permit process is they have an onsite inspection by a code officer. A lot of the complaints that we've had with short-term rentals have to do with parties and loud noise and music and that sort of thing happening at night. So one of the new requirements is all of this, all of the parking has to be off the street. So they have to be in the driveway or in the garage. And that severely limits how many vehicles can actually be at that location, because they cannot park in the street, in front of the house, down the street, wherever. It has to be in the driveway or in the garage. Occupancy, that's restricted now to one person per 200 square feet. So, but no matter how big the house is, the occupancy cannot exceed 12. So that, again, is going to limit the amount of people that could be there. The ordinance is related to noise and light intrusion and that sort of thing applied, just like they apply to every property, so that that's not changing. They do have to have a local rep that can respond to the location within one hour. So if we contact them, they have to be able to show up. If they don't, they can get a citation for that, could potentially even have their, their permit revoked. All of the rules and the contact information for that local rep have to be posted inside the house, so the renters are aware of what the rules are and how to get ahold of the, the local person. Again, like I said, I'll have some packets here at the back table at the end, in case y'all want to get more information. So a couple of stats on short-term rentals, 183 of them in the city. We have software that kind of scours the internet for us and looks for advertisements for those rentals and identifies them for us. We have 107 of them that are permitted or in the permit process. Again, this is new, and we're working through those incoming applications as fast as we can. We've issued 16 notices since the new ordinance went into effect for issues other than not having a permit. And the ones that are not permitted, the ones that we have identified, we've started enforcement action against those to get them into compliance. That's all I have.
Alrighty, so we're going to start the Q and A, and I'm going to begin with the first row. They go back in that order. Does anyone on the first row have a question?
I have more questions.
Yes, sir.
Let's start with him. The Parks and Recreation do a wonderful job here. And when he's alluding to the short-term rents, let's say that a private residence wanted to use one of the parks after hours to park their guest and run a shuttle to their house. Is that allowed?
Under the current, I'll let Mr. Simpson come up here and also expand on my answer and correct me if I'm wrong. But under the current ordinance, you can't have any more than 12 people in your home. Yeah, in a short-term rental home. So if it's like an Airbnb or Verbo, are you talking about a personal private home?
I have people in my backyard.
That is not illegal, according to our.
What I'm saying is, I'll be allowed to, in the interest of the other neighbors. What I'm saying is, I'll be allowed to, in the interest of the other neighbors, park those vehicles at a park and have a shuttle run and drop those people at their parks over there. They come to our house and we do what we do. And they, are we allowed to do that? And why, if we not, why not?
If you're operating as a short-term rental, you cannot do that.
No.
But if if it was a private residence, yeah, you're allowed to. You're a private homeowner, you're allowed to.
Well, you can do it overnight.
Overnight, not overnight.
There's no overnight parking. That's that's the second part. Where's Dwayne?
Yes, sir.
Overnight parking in parks. Curfew at midnight. I I just had somebody ask me about that, so I don't know. And one of the reasons is, no overnight parking in our parks.
Thank you, Mayor.
That's right.
Yes, sir.
That's right.
That's the mayor. That's our, that's our city manager. That's the city manager. You know, I report to him and and depend on the day. Yes, sir.
When uh you won your election two years.
Yes, sir.
Um one of the things that some of the community did was try to level the plate. One of my favorite traits, and we never talk about minorities ever again, minority counties don't exist, it's the candidate and what they bring to that. Uh how do you see, or how does the mayor, the progression of the board as it sits now, or it changes? What initiatives are you enacting as a board in Grand Prairie to ensure that that happens? Vis a vis seventy-five million dollars this year, sixty million dollars two years ago, and no accountability, not aware of, for where that money was stolen. And we all bucked it up. Why isn't there transparency and there should be? I mean, I get that there's future projects, as I just saw, and they're great. There needs to be more transparency on what you want to budget for and where it's going after you did it. Grand Prairie, two years ago, was told after the fact that that sixty million was. And vote for it because we need the money with no pre-planning on what we were voting for. Just give them seventy-five million because they're great. Well, I don't think that's necessarily right.
Yes, sir. So you're asking a question about transparency with public funds. So I will speak to what I do know, since I've been on council for fifteen months and not twenty-four months yet. I know that with the seventy-five million dollar bond that was approved in May of twenty-twenty-one, sixty-seven million dollars of that has went to Epic Central to build the hotels in Epic Central, the conference center and the amenities around it. So that's where that sixty-seven million went. I cannot, I cannot speak to the sixty million because I was not on council at that time, and I do not have any information on that. But I will allow anyone that has that information to entertain that question, sir.
Anybody?
I don't know. Since I've been mayor, we've got seventy-five million dollars and another seventy-five million dollars. The first seventy-five million dollars were backed by a course that sells taxes specifically for Epic Central, Epic Waters, Playground Adventures. The next seventy-five million bond package was for the two hotels, rest- conference center, restaurant upside at Epic Central and some of it for downtown. That's the two seventy-five million dollars that I'm aware of. And the language, what they were far, was in the language for the building. Big time, I held the town hall, I told specifically what they were far. Epic Central, um the Epic, Epic Waters, Playground Adventures, those of you that attended those town halls with me, no less, we were very transparent about it. So anytime we have a bond package, we have a bond package spelled out in the language, what it's going for. Now, a sixty million dollar one that may have been passed years ago for for uh bond projects, uh water, wastewater, some towels, those aren't specific. It's, but I don't recall doing them, though, any of those recently. We have, we, we haven't, we haven't.
Yes, I have.
Those are the, those are the two. Uh we have both of them, semi-familiar, the two semi-familiar.
Yes, sir.
Third question.
Yes, sir.
Grand Prairie has a position that charities cannot be supported by the city other than maybe a couple of trucks and then some employees. You're not gonna specifically stand up and pick out a charity to support. Why not? Especially food issues.
I'll take that one. That's not entirely accurate. We support all, really all the charities in our city uh through sponsorships. We can't donate money directly, so we support their events through sponsorships. We do have a a five oh one C three partner and that's Grand Prairie United Charities.
Yes, sir.
They are our official partner for rent, food and utility assistance. Uh and that actually strengthened during COVID. The COVID money that we received, a lot of those funds that we received, we had Grand Prairie United Charities distribute those for us because they have the systems in place and they have the location. They have the food storage. They are equipped to all, to handle all that and the city really isn't. So we created that partnership. So we, I, you know, I've been here eleven years. Mayor's been here a lot longer. I've never known of a great charity in the city that came to us for sponsorship and assistance that we did not uh assist. And actually, I talked about this many years as a police chief. We have the most benevolent city of any I've ever worked in and I've worked in several. So I think we ought to be proud of that and we're always looking for new opportunities. Sometimes as a governmental entity, we do have things that restrict us, like vis a vis, I can't give you money, right, that I can sponsor your events. So we do have some like uh regulatory rules that we have to follow. But uh again, anybody's got a great cause, uh contact me. If we can help you, we'll help you.
Yes, sir.
Congratulations. As a progressive city, that everybody in Texas should be proud of, not just us. And the wave of the future is the metroplex from Dallas to Austin. You'll see it in your lifetime, where it's all one city. What do you see as our role as residents that we can help the people that govern us, that we voted for? How can we help as a community to to get that vision where Grand Prairie is Grand Prairie?
Okay. I think that's a great question. Uh I'm gonna take it this way and I'd like my answer. I think the first thing that we can do as a community is when you elect a council member or mayor, you're holding them accountable. And I'll tell you this, you guys do it to me for sure. Check my Facebook, my email, my social media. Y'all are holding me accountable on my votes, on what I ran on when I ran for council and things that I do in the community. And I appreciate that because you're making me a better public official, making me a better leader, and you're allowing me to grow in this public service. I'm very grateful for that. Secondarily, I think continuing to be involved, attending these town hall meetings, attending city council meetings. If you're not able to attend it, watch it from home. You can go on gbtv.org and watch it from home. Ask your questions, send those emails. We have a community event engaging with that, coming out. And if you need an issue resolved in your community or your neighborhood, call us. Give us a phone call. Allow us to make our community better. Because all of us that are serving here on the city council and serving within the city government, our job is to be a representative of you. But we can't properly represent you if we don't know what you need, what you want to see in the city to improve. So that's, those are the, for me, the two and three top pillars to make the city continue to progress. And I think lastly, being involved in voting in every election.
Yes.
Every time there's a city council election, you're voting. Every time there's a school board election, you're voting. Any election, you're voting. Why is that? These people that you're electing are your representatives. But if you, if you didn't vote for them, it's almost like you don't have any skin in the game. For us to get things that we want to see, for us to get policies that we want to see implemented, you gotta vote. You gotta let your voices be heard. That's how I think we trust, not just transform the city, continue to improve the city and make it the best city for everyone that lives here. Thank you for that question. Thank you for coming, Mr. Jones. Love that guy. Yes, ma'am. I think we're, what we're going to do for sure is we're going to expand the VIA program. So currently, we have ten bus, ten vans in the city that operate. Um we can expand up to thirty vans, I believe, uh in the next few years due to federal grant money. So shout out to the federal government for helping us out with that. So that's the goal within the next uh year or two. As we continue to have demand for VIA, we're going to expand the number of of vans and the number of drivers. So that's the first place that we're gonna look. And we're blessed to have a lot of money from uh infrastructure, some of the past federal bills that passed in the last few years. I agree. And I think if you look at the World Cup coming in twenty-twenty-six, Dallas being a whole city, and trust me, I'll be at the games. Um we're gonna definitely need to continue to expand our public transit with the VIA program. Possibly look at linking, I don't know, um our our transportation director would feel about this, but linking up with Arlington and other cities that have VIA to bring us together. So that's something that we're looking at.
Other question that's to do with, we know what's going on in Jackson, Mississippi.
Yes, ma'am.
We know what's happening in Lake Michigan. How is the water infrastructure being impressed?
I believe the water infrastructure here in the city is in tip-top shape. We have a lot of regular, so continue to look at it and make sure it's clean and uh accessible for all residents to drink and be confident in drinking it. Um I don't know if I want to let our public works director speak on that in more nuance. I will, yes, sir. Go ahead. So the question is, are you, are you asking about prepare for the growth or?
Are we open?
We are. Um short answer is yes. Um I think a lot of their i- issues had more to do with not taking care of the existing infrastructure. I think if you look across town, especially Robinson Road South, we've got a lot of new infrastructure coming. Uh we've got a lot of new new pipes in the ground, but that's also replacing some of the old infrastructure. So the north part of town, like I talked about earlier, was built in the fifty-sixties and seventies. So we are in the process of replacing a lot of the older infrastructure to get EVC versus the cast iron. So uh we are continually improving that. Uh we have a master plan underway right now that will look at expansion. How do we accommodate that? As y'all may know, may not know, we were really close to going to stage two. Um I actually was begging Steve to do it. He wouldn't do it. He made the right call because we didn't get into that issue. But um we were stressing the system max during that heat wave that we had. I mean, we were pushing every limit uh that we've ever pushed in the city before. We produce more water this summer than we've ever produced in the past. So there will be expansion of the system, mainly south, but we will have to acquire more water. Typically, we do that through water purchases. We purchased water from four different entities, mostly Dallas Water Utilities, Fort Worth, Mid-Locan and Mansfield. About eighty percent of our water comes from Dallas Water Utilities. It's the cheapest water we purchase. We try to maximize that and the infrastructure that we're putting in the ground right now will allow us to purchase more and take more water from them, but also helps us push water to different parts of the city. So I think we're in a good place, but I'm also biased. So thank you for the question. Yes, ma'am.
We're bringing a lot of growth to Grand Prairie. What are we planning on doing that as?
She asked um that we're bringing a lot of growth to the city of Grand Prairie. What are our plans for I twenty? Now, as as far as the growth, you're talking about utilities, you're talking about just infrastructure in general, the I twenty highway. Well, so there's a couple of entities we deal with, and I'm answering for Walter. Walter's not here. He's our transportation guru. Um so it does increase traffic, right? So part of what they will look at is the traffic flows north and south and east and west. That is not maintained by us. So that's a different entity that maintains uh I twenty.
I can speak a little bit to it because I'm on the RTC. We're in charge of I twenty. Hi, Maryland.
Hi, Brown.
You could ask me that last week or. The RTC is responsible for the major thoroughfares in the thirteen-county region. We had a meeting today. The biggest bottleneck on I twenty, or there's two. The one we all see is where it chokes down at three sixty. Doesn't doesn't matter whether you're going east or west, but you're you're bringing a lane in off of three sixty and you're shutting a lane off going westbound. But once you get past that, the bigger problem on I twenty is the I twenty-two eighty-seven intersection over on West Arlington. We have just been approved, we would approve letting the contracts for doing the engineering studies on that. That's a huge multi-million dollar project and that will be kicking off pretty soon. And then on down the line, we'll have to do something about three sixty, I twenty intersection. If any of you are in manufacturing, you know, you're only as fast as that slowest lane. So you adding lanes doesn't help. You have to get those choke points down. And the first choke point that the RTC is working on on I twenty is unfortunately not three sixty, the two eighty-seven one graded higher for regs, backups, time delays. So the two eighty-seven one is first and then the three sixty one is next, Maryland. But that's not a city function. That's an RTC, a metropolitan planning organization, decision of which we need, we had a meeting today, one to three o'clock.
What is RTC?
RTC is Regional Transportation Council, forty-two member board. Uh the grand, City Grand Prairie has one seat on it. And that seat, Dallas has five, is split between east and west. The money's split by population. The east gets sixty-seven percent of the funding. The west gets thirty-three percent because of the population disparity between the east and west. So everything's split. And that was why the two eighty-seven intersection was so huge because they're dealing with less money. But it it rated so high, it was put on the list. Regional Transportation Council, uh nearly every, every judge, the judges in all the counties are part of it. Mayors, Mayor Ross there, Mayor Trevino, the nearly every mayor around. So it's a big, big, big deal. RTC, you can Google it. You can watch, you can watch the uh meetings live. You can, you can stream it later. RT, Regional Transportation Council.
Thank you, Mayor. Said it better than I could. Appreciate it. Alright, anyone else on the first row that has a question? Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
I'm Miss Ray. I'm board member of the library, city employee. I want to share with the audience. I have first had knowledge of how our city operates because I have utilized traffic, the director of traffic and public works. I have three new streets in my neighborhood, which is Delworth. I live in Delworth. And I'm responsible for the community of Delworth. And Gabe, I appreciate everything that your people have done for my community in Delworth and the city manager's office and people at the library, working with my babysat at the work center. Thank you so much. I appreciate you.
Yes, ma'am. So we're gonna go to the second row for any questions.
Yeah, Councilman.
Yes, sir, Mr. John.
Let me uh reference my question this way. Um we appreciate staff. I've lived in Grand Prairie for thirty-two years, always. Quick response, call on. You might get the answer you want, but you can definitely go get an answer. So and that's greatly appreciated. And I want to compliment your staff today. My question concerns code enforcement. This is my fourth term as homeowners president. We got about seven different homeowners associated about. The thing we need, and hope that you guys can put it in the budget somewhere, we need more code enforcement officers. Because we have established deed restriction covenants and we talk with you about that. You and Councilman Johnson, I compliment you. You always respond. You always connect with us. I really appreciate that. But if people do not want to follow deed restrictions covenants, they don't need to live in Westchester. This is Westchester.
Yes, sir.
This is where it all starts. But if they don't want to follow deed restrictions now, they they don't need to live. They need to move out somewhere in the some rural area where they want to be. This is a, this is a plan design. And we want to keep it looking good. We are forty years into Westchester. And I I've been through some neighborhoods and five years, they already run down. Yeah. So if you can help me with that, please.
Yes, sir, Mr. Stewart. Well, first and foremost, before I let Mr. Simpson speak, I want to thank you for your service as Westchester Homeowner Association President. Can we get my hand? You're a hundred percent right. Westchester's been here for forty years, seventeen years longer than I've been alive. Y'all have done a great job. Y'all have done a great job keeping it up and it's our responsibility to support you. I'll let Mr. Simpson respond, but let's make sure we stay in contact afterwards. Let's speak on this further. Thank you, sir.
So thank you for your comments tonight. Uh just a little kind of background on on code enforcement. So we do have thirteen positions that work out in the in the field to drive around and and address violations. Um we have five vacancies, but uh our city manager has supported. We have five vacancies, but, uh, our city manager has supported our pay increase for code enforcement to become more competitive in the market. And we do have, uh, people in the employer, in the hiring process to fill all five of those vacancies. So as soon as we get them here, get them trained up, you'll see more code officers out and about taking care of issues. Uh, also to address short-term rentals, our city manager did, did allow us to add a full-time position specifically to handle short-term rentals. And so we, we feel like that's, uh, a step in the right direction to, to make sure we're able to stay on top of everything. Thank you.
Let me add something real quick. Code enforcement falls on police department. I shouldn't have said that. Should have kept that back. So real quickly, not only do we recognize what you're, you're pointing out, but one of the things that, uh, Ryan recognized real early on when he started, took over code enforcement is that we need a more, uh, efficient way for our code officers to work their way through the neighborhoods. So for instance, some of these issues you're bringing up, in my time with code officer, two hours, you may not see it because they're there very quickly. But by the time they go back, have to get affidavits from everybody, it's a two-hour long process. So what they were finding is they're spending their time hitting these nails sticking up instead of the larger problem, uh, which are some of the things you're addressing. We've changed that. We've moved to a simple process now where they can come through your, and this is brand new. They can come through your process, through your neighborhood and knock out, uh, a code violation in two minutes. Kind of like, you know, parking violations, very, very quick. So now they can cover more ground much more quickly. The other thing I want to point out is it's, as much as we would like the opportunity to address HOA restrictions, you know we can. So I think you tackled me one time, hope some boats marked in the parking, are you the driveway? We can't help you on that one. I think that was sort of the spirit of some of those questions, but I can promise you this, the other issues that you're seeing when you drive around tall grass, dilapidated fences. These officers now, even though we don't have as many as we'd like, we're hiring more, but they're able to do much more than us. Do better.
Thank you. Any other questions on the second row? Move to the third row. Any questions? Yes, ma'am.
My name is Minister Kimberly Ten Three. I am new in the community, and I'm so excited to be here. Now, I have questions and everything. Oh, my God, I'm just so excited. I'm just learning a lot since I've been here. I moved to Westchester July the eighteenth and trying to fill my way out because I'm actually, let's get this out before. One raise in Fort Worth, Texas, uh, but I've never, I come around, I have a nonprofit and work profit business. So I just pray the next Lord send me a different way, like a hymn, because I was gonna pack and move back to the ranch. But I just pray that the opponents of cabinet, I'm just against problems, sitting for work. And I never, between Fort Worth and Dallas, I'm willing to help get in where I can get in and do what I do. I work with children. I've also been a lot with HUD. And a lot of, I've been investigated with federal. So I have a background, and I've been doing this since I was thirteen. And now, just turned fifty-three, I'm not ashamed. So what I did take on, since I've been here to kind of fill my way in, I, I am the new crossing guard on Queens and.
Well, thank you and welcome to Grand Prairie. We're happy to have you here. And please let us know what we can do to make you feel even more welcome. So thank you for being here. So anybody else have any questions on the fourth row? Yes, ma'am.
Well, I'm doing.
Oh, yeah, please.
A person is asking, and I know this is more of a school district question, but has, has there been talk of more elementary schools coming with the influx of apartments?
Yeah, I don't have the authority to answer that.
But I do have, we have had discussions with them. Brian, correct me if I'm wrong, our GPISD is underutilized because of the charter schools. Did y'all hear? Our GPISD has vacancies. It hasn't grown as much as our population has because we're adding other public schools. This is fresh on my mind because we had a public, a charter school come to us last night. If you watched the Tuesday night, if you watched our agenda, charter schools are public schools. That's a fact, state law. They have, so the answer to your question is GPISD would love to be in the position to have to build more elementarys. They would in a New York minute. There's not enough kids attending them now to require that because mu- many kids are going to charter schools. Okay? Zoom, that's the answer. There is not. We wish there was. There's no limit. Uh, to you, it did. This sweet lady comes to every council meeting. She knows what's going on. Uh, she leaves early sometimes.
Got a backhanded compliment.
We get to talk to her. She just gets up and leaves. But, uh, no, there's no limit. I could go on on this. I'm not going to.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, ma'am. I will allow you to ask a question.
With all this new stuff coming in, can you guys see if we can get an HEB?
So prior to getting on council, I learned that for years, the, the Honorable Mayor has been working tirelessly to bring to the Grand Prairie. And we're gonna keep on working to bring it to GP. Any other questions on Zoom? No questions. Okay. We'll go to the next row. I believe that's row number four or, yeah, I think four. Any questions on row four?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
With all of the new construction, every complex looks wonderful. What kind of, um, city enforcement is in place so that fifteen years from now, they still look how they look now? I moved here, back in two thousand, Skilman Road, to Dallas. Was fantastic. Looked all these in my thing. Now, it's almost third world. My concern is, yeah, down the forum, down the fronted road, everywhere else, you see all these, they pop.
Yes, sir.
What will the city do to be sure they look the end how they look now?
I think, uh, my deputy city manager would like to speak on that, and I'll, I'll second any motion he makes.
Through our housing department, we have a housing enforcement staff. Every apartment complex in this city is inspected on an annual basis. Not only is it inspected for safety, it's also inspected for structural integrity. The, insofar as cleanliness, our Clean Prairie Initiative, we push that, insofar as junk vehicles, all of those types of things are inspected by our housing staff. And they're ranked rated on a tier system from one to three. The inspection frequency goes up based upon where they fall within that tier. If it's a tier one property, it's gonna be inspected once a year. If it's a tier two property, they get by annual inspection. If it's a tier three property, we're looking at it every quarter. And if it remains a tier three property past one year, and don't make the repairs that are necessary in order to raise it to a minimum of a tier two property, at that time, we would bring it before the council and we would look for revoking their CO and telling them that they no longer can operate in this city.
Thank you, Bill. Yes, ma'am.
I'm the first one yet. This is definitely one of the best times I've been to, uh, Grand Prairie. And it seems like to me that a lot of individuals have overwhelmed by so many questions, dealing with anxiety. We have an organization, Grand Prairie, where it's helping itself up. What we do is we, um, offer certification classes for mental health. And so City of Grand Prairie, like other cities, where they deal with a lot of trauma, I want to know how we can partner up with the city. We have police officers, I see Constable Sandra, um, back there. She attended the class. We have judges attended the class. Many citizens here in Grand Prairie, that attend our certification class. We have it at the Delaware Race Center. Um, I have to each month pay for a hundred dollars every month for the classes. We have about thirty people attending each month. And I want to continue to keep that up. And I want to know how we can partner up and how more people can, um, know about this certification class and be able to attain that.
I think first and foremost, y'all are doing a great job just dealing with mental health, knowing that right now we have a large mental health crisis across the United States of America and Texas specifically. So thank you first and foremost for the work that you're doing. What I'd say is that after this meeting, let's have a conversation and find a path forward as to how not only myself as council member, but the entire city can be more cooperative with your organization and the work that y'all are doing. So let's speak, let's speak more into that after this meeting. But thank you for the work that you're doing, man. Thank you. Yes, sir.
First, Councilman, I, I want to let you know that I'm proud of the work that you're doing. I'm proud of the fact that you're a twenty-three-year-old. A lot of conversations about Grand Prairie and how Grand Prairie is growing. What's Grand Prairie's plan for making sure that we always have affordable housing?
Terrific question. Terrific question. So my response to that is that within our housing department, we have, uh, many vouchers, emergency vouchers that we provide to residents that need assistance, uh, with housing. We have charities here in the city, United Charities that, uh, work with to provide emergency housing for residents. Uh, but also council and, uh, some of our council members, we're having conversations about looking at some of our older apartment complexes and trying to use some of the federal dollars for rehab to rehab those buildings that allow them to be possible affordable housing units in the future. Uh, that's something that we're looking for in the future. It's not on the dais, it's not on the docket at the moment, but that is something that we're looking at.
My second question, I think you kind of alluded to it. What's Grand Prairie's plan or are you working with the federal government as it relates to the, uh, infrastructure that the federal government?
Yeah, so, uh, great question. So currently, we're, I mean, we're actually in the process of it right now. At our, uh, council meeting on Tuesday, we, uh, apply, our staff applied for about twenty-six million dollars federal government grants to build more bridges in the city. We are looking at building, if we get the grant money, to build a pedestrian and biking bridge across, uh, the peninsula, connecting, uh, Lake Ridge Parkway all the way down. So that's something that we're looking at. We're looking at getting more money if the government does grant it to the city to repair more streets and do things dealing with infrastructure in the city of Grand Prairie. So we're already working in tandem with that. In March, whenever we visited DC for the National League of Cities Conference, we met with our Congress, members of Congress, Jake Elsie and, um, Mark B C. And we're asking for assistance and trying to get help from them to secure some of those dollars for the city of Grand Prairie. So thank you for that question, sir.
Councilmember, real quick to add on that. John, good to see you, by the way. Uh, these infrastructure B I L grants, uh, you know, there's over a trillion dollars. They're gonna be rolling out over the next five years. So your city staff is ha- already having ongoing meetings. As the council member alluded to, we just applied for two big ones. We've got, we've identified nine different projects that we want to prioritize. And we're getting, uh, all of those submissions ready. Some of them are ready. And then as soon as it's offered, we'll be ready to submit. So we're gonna be on the front end of the submissions, not on the reactive. I just wanted everybody to be in the room to know that we have the best city manager.
And Mayor, and Mayor.
And Mayor, yes. I'm not, I'm not gonna second it. He, he always gets on me, so I ain't gonna second that. But yeah, great mayor, great mayor. Um, do we have any other questions from the fifth row? Or in the following row? I'll start with the gentleman over there.
I just want to piggyback on this gentleman, uh, question. It seemed like a lot of, uh, I'm, I'm even more.
Can't say no.
Great. So I'll try to answer this question in a holistic fashion. A big reason why we're not able to deny apartment conflicts is coming to the city of Grand Prairie because of zoning laws. In the seventies, the sixties and eighties, the council at that time made a lot of decisions regarding zoning. And they decided to zone many plots of land, acres of land in the city as multifamily. So whoever owned that land is the only one that can request a zoning change to move it from multifamily to single family, multifamily to commercial, multifamily to retail. The landlord can only, can push for that, uh, zoning change and the council can deny it or approve it. So council does not have the authority nor legal status to deny something that is zoned for multifamily. And that's an issue that we have. So if you see, if you complain, if you come to me and let me know about an apartment complex that's possibly being proposed near your home and you want us to not deny it, we cannot do it if we don't have legal standing. To have legal standing, it has to be zoned for commercial, for example. We can deny, um, a multifamily development that's zoned in a commercial district or zoned for mo- single family or zoned for retail. So we, we, that's the one we can deny. We can also deny if they come to the city and they have variances that go against our unified development code. Then we can deny it and tell them that you have to meet all the things that we asked for, for us to approve this. Those are our two major ways to deny it. I'll give you an example. If they meet all, they meet all the checks and dot, cross all the Ts, dot all the Is, come to us with a proposal, uh, and it's zoned for multifamily. We can deny it, but what's gonna happen is they're gonna go to court, they're gonna get an injunction, and they can begin building the next day. We're gonna spend, so it's soon enough, tens of thousands of millions of dollars to fight that lawsuit. They're still gonna lose. So that's why we try not to do that because it's not the best use of taxpayer funds. I'd rather build a park somewhere with taxpayer funds than fight a losing battle. Thank you for the question, sir. Exactly. Yeah. So, yeah, like, like, like the mayor just stated. Yeah, um, you know, the side of the street. Yeah. I could walk to that apartment complex. Yeah.
If it has an S in front of it, when you drive around, you see our signs, little white signs. That, there, you know, you've got to see when you drive around town.
They'll have like a letter Z, one, two, five, six, nine, ten, all these numbers, those things.
Public hearing coming up, just remember, if it has a Z in front of it, we can say no without recourse. If it has an S in front of it, if, as, he's already learned, where you learn. If they need all, not all the Is and cross all the Ts.
Yes, sir.
We can't deny it. So that's the big difference. And so just recently unanimously, we denied two applications for apartments because they were wanting to change them from commercial to apartments.
And then the second one wanted to change it from single family to multiple.
Right.
We denied that.
We denied.
Yes, ma'am.
I understand. I, I get it. I talked to y'all about this last week. But just because somebody made a decision, right, probably thirty, forty or fifty years ago, sixty years ago, does not mean we have the water and power to keep up with these people. All right. I'm sorry for those of you that were not at city council last week. Um, right now, while, go back a month, we were being asked to sit in our homes at seventy-eight degrees with the shade drawn because there wasn't enough power. We were asked to let our barns die because there wasn't enough water. Okay, um, in the winter of February last year, those of us in this immediate neighborhood signed our homes for two days with less than seven hours of power. Okay, thirty-eight degrees in my house, broken pipes because there was no heat to keep them warm. So I get this. I understand the law, but it, it, it implies that we can pull the resources out of thin air because someone made his own choice back in the sixties, forty years before Jimmy was born.
Ninety-nine, baby.
Well, with the state of Texas.
I know, and I understand, but you can address it with me last week, get the tone of it now. But if here, you know, I, we kind of need to be reassured that our lives are gonna stay on.
I will tell you this, Encore, Encore wants cell power. Encore is a delivery. But the, the power companies want to send cell power. They are gonna do the best they can to keep up with this, but we can't control that.
Of course.
Uh, I, I'm sorry. We can, let's be honest here. We can grant moratoriums. We granted a six-month moratorium on apartments two years ago.
That's all good.
And that's as long as you can do is by six months. That's, the law will not let you, and you have to have a reasonable, reason to do it. And we can't anymore because we just didn't want, you, you can't. It's hard to slow it down. It is really hard. Every city in the metroplex that has dirt available is building. I, I mean, let's look at it. You can't drive around anywhere.
Yeah, we know.
Uh, and why? Because the dirt has rights. You, you heard me tell you. Uh, it's my, it's my, I'm sorry, but the dirt has rights. It transfers with whoever owns it. They don't care who owns it. The dirt has rights. And if it's on multi- And if it's on multifamily, right now, if you were investing money, you would wanna invest in a company that owns dirt that builds multifamily in the Dallas-Fort Worth region, put there. That's what's selling. All I know is our staff stays on top of the cog growth data on how we do infrastructure and what we can control.
And to echo the mayor's part uh point, a lot of this will start at the state and federal level. So we're asking for more support in regards to infrastructure, improving our electric grid here in the state of Texas. Those are issues that we fill in the local level, but we don't truly have any uh authority over. So it's really on the state and federal level to support us and make our lives easier so we can provide the best service we can to our residents here in Grand Prairie. Yeah. But thank you for that question, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, that's several points, several uh concern. First of all, I moved from here from Los Angeles in two thousand and six. If someone had told me that I could, could not get on the freeway after three o'clock in the afternoon and I'd be like in Los Angeles, I, I would never move it. And I'm sure other people feel the same way. This is, it's, it's getting to be crazy.
Yes, ma'am.
Uh the, the, the traffic, the accidents, it's really, it's, it's, it's not fun anymore there here. True, true. Um the second thing is, what is the vacancy rate of all those apartment buildings? What is the vacancy? Are they renting these apartments?
They're rented. I believe at our, at our budget meeting that we had uh less than a month ago, the vacancy rate is beneath fifteen percent, if I'm not mistaken, yeah, beneath fifteen percent. So at the moment, the D F W is a hotspot for people moving from all over the United States of America and internationally as well. And an issue that we're having, as uh she stated earlier, is our infrastructure is not matching the demand. So we need more assistance, more funds from the federal and state government to our individual municipalities and counties to allow us to expand our infrastructure, whether that's uh building, I guess, building more vertically so people aren't spread around horizontally and it's sprawling cities, you're having people building up to decrease the amount of need for cars. That could be something that we look at, but it's really gonna start at the state and federal level to help us here in the city.
Is there, are there any plans, I hear all the plans about the restaurants. Are there any plans for more grocery stores? I don't care if it's, it's A T B or not. Are there plans for more grocery stores? Right now, we just have Tom Thumb, Kroger and Walmart locally.
Yes, ma'am. A blessing that we had is within this, well, actually this year, we brought Sprouts. So you now have Sprouts on.
That's, that's north of that.
It's still in Grand Prairie.
I know.
Yes, ma'am. So yeah, our goal is to bring more grocery stores to the city. The issue is we can't demand them to come to the city. We can incentivize them, ask them politely, and maybe incentivize them and tell them to come to the city, but we cannot require that. We don't have uh a law that says you gotta, you gotta build A T B and G P.
In this area, ma'am, I wanna talk about this area. Marty and his team are doing a great job trying to work throughout the city on this. But in this particular area, him and his team have spent a lot of focus on Lake Ridge and Camp Wisdom. We can't make them come there. We're starting to get a little bit of traction. And so we're hoping we'll get to all the grocery, because I live nearby as well uh in the Lake Ridge, Camp Wisdom area. Marty, anything to add to that?
Yeah, and part of the challenge we're doing, we're, we're depending on our I T staff. They're doing a great job getting some apps. For whatever reason, grocers have, people are involved in making decisions are old school. They like radius, circle radii or population. Yeah, close to the lake, it skews the numbers because you see partial and then there's this gap. And so we're pointing out eight-minute drive time numbers. We're trying to give it to them in a different way to say, look, there's enough people here to justify a grocery store. Uh if we just have to keep politely um pestering them, that's right, and reminding them the data. Uh the demographics especially down that way uh and, and the amount of new residential to build plays to our advantage. We're not gonna give up. We're gonna keep asking.
Uh the good thing to remember is a few years ago, we were asking about bringing in restaurants to the city of Grand Prairie. We're now bringing a restaurant. So we're gonna try to transition that to bringing some grocery stores too.
Yeah, we'll, last question. I live, I live right off of Declan where the new apartment building, one of the new apartment buildings is going up. Is there a restriction on when they can start construction? Because in the morning, the trucks start running, rolling in about six, six-thirty. You can hear the beep, 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 you know, and then they start at seven. And then this weekend, they even worked on Saturday. Is, is there, is there something that controls or?
Yeah, I'll allow our um public works director to respond to that question.
Seven o'clock is the normal start time when they can start physically working. That doesn't mean the trucks can't roll in and get prepared to work at seven. Typically, seven to seven uh weekends are by request only. So if you are continuing to have loud issues, contact me, let me know. We'll see if we can see what we can't do, but typically it's seven to seven.
Okay, eleven to seven.
Thank you, man, for the question. We have any other questions on that row? Yes, ma'am.
Yes, uh just like our neighbor here, has concerns about electricity and water. I also have concerns about waste management with the addition of uh and the increase of the garbage. Do we have the, the capacity to handle waste management?
Yeah, currently, we have the capacity to manage our waste management. But something that we will have to look at in the future is you're having more and more difficulty hiring helpers that run on these trucks. Uh we're having less and le- less people that wants to work that job and the demand. I, okay. Yeah, I'll finish out, I'll, I'll pass it over to Steve. So part of it is the wages. Uh people are finding other opportunities that are paying higher. So that's maybe something that our contractor, Republic, we have to look at possibly in the future. Um but that, that's, that's our major concern, that area. Uh just having more, having helpers that will be able to work on a day-to-day basis. And maybe we'll have to see Republic to see if they can improve the system in the future.
But do we have the land base?
Yeah, yeah, yes. Uh yes, great question.
I'll, I'll answer it if I'm incorrect. Steve will uh will help me out. We do have the land base right now at our uh, what is it called? Landfill, yeah. Landfill. We purchased additional land that's gonna help us um pile that area up for another nineteen, what is it, nineteen years, correct?
No, no, sorry. Look, that's another twenty, twenty-five.
Twenty-five years, the top four. Forty to forty-five years, but twenty-five additionally from where we're at before. So another forty-five years, we have space to uh fill up that landfill. So we're good for the next half-century, so that's how I'm seventy-three.
Yeah, great. Well, you can, you can tell he's learned a lot in the last eighteen months because he has really. So two quick things. Republic is an awesome vendor. Matter of fact, Robin is good tonight. So our contractor has a representative here at this meeting with Republic, and that's Robin. That, that's how community uh minded they are. We're also very blessed because like the city of Irving that does self-collection, they have city employees do it. They've really struggled with staffing uh and fuel costs, particularly during COVID. Republic has kept up. You will sometimes see that they struggle a little bit, but they're very attentive to cleaning up if they miss a route one day. Uh I think you all have been very patient with them, but yes, they can scale up and down. And it's a blessing that we contract that now because again, cities that are doing it, the city employees are really struggling and paying much more overtime than we're paying for our contract services. And then the second thing to the council member's point, we're very blessed in that we have a landfill. Most cities do not have a landfill. So our brush collection, our bulk item collection and our regular collection, two days a week, this is a service far beyond most other cities. So we're very proud of our waste collection. Uh and again, if you ever have a hiccup in your waste collection, you're, I want you to call us, email us, write them. We can get you usually same-day resolution when we partner with Republic. So Robin, anything to add to that? Thank you for being here.
Yeah, no, thank you for, for what you said. Me, Mel, the ground, I explicitly have an issue just to reach out. City staff is really great at connecting with us because many times we still have a vehicle in the vicinity. Just remember, everything, like you said, some things are running a little bit slow. So if your street is down and your neighborhood's down, not to worry because we are with the heat and the hope, we are running a little bit slower. However, if you get home and you, only your street is down, the whole neighborhood's connected, give us a call because we might be just a few streets over. We'll get right back out with you. But yeah.
I would also like to know, when are they gonna complete Camp Bliss construction? And is it gonna be two lanes traveling east, uh east and west or just one in either direction?
I believe it's going to be two lanes. It's expanding to, to, yeah, to go in east and west, yeah. But that's, that's the information I have at this point.
Okay, and when is the completion date? Because some days it's open, some days it's not.
Yeah, Camp Bliss is gonna be forming in two weeks' direction.
Okay.
And they're looking, that is a joint project with county because the county is leading and we're looking probably at completion in a year or year.
That's, that's our backup.
Thank you, Bill.
And the last thing I want to know is what's going on with the, what was the water deployment on Matthews? What are they gonna do with that building?
Repeat the question, please.
The building that's there, it's the former firehouse on Matthews. What is, what's gonna happen with that?
So right now, that building has been vacant from fire station use. Uh there's no intention to put fire department back in it. So right now, the water utilities owns the, the land. We do have a ground storage tank on that side, so we do use it for some water facilities. If you live close to there, back when we were doing meter change outs a couple of years ago, three years ago, we ran a lot of meter change outs through that building. Right now, it's overflow storage. We don't, we don't have a grand plan for that. The building was built, I think, in the sixties, so any major innovation would be quite expensive. So right now, it's in flux. I don't have a good plan for it other than maybe renovate it for parking or for temporary storage. One of the issues we struggle with, with Grand Prairie's geographic boundary being so long and linear, my guys that have offices in the north, it's a forty-minute drive one way to get to the far south. So we're gonna be using something in the south to build some sort of service center in the south and split kind of Grand Prairie north and south. We will probably use that as a temporary holding uh facility for.
Do you mean like large vehicles would be part of that?
I don't know. Uh a lot of time, we take parts. A lot of time, we keep parts, uh meters, lids, perks, little things that are on the deal. So a lot of times, that's what we keep there. Right now, we don't have like, we don't plan on doing material storage for a lot of our big trucks, but it's just a, it's just kind of a stopgap for us.
Okay, well, of course, as a homeowner, I'm concerned about, you know, the political view of things. You don't want anything that distracts, you know, from your housing. So if, I mean, would you give us some insight of what you're, what you do decide to do with that?
We can, if you would like, I'll give you my card afterwards. We can stay in touch. Thanks, ma'am.
Thank you, Gabe, and thank you for that question, ma'am. Do we have any other questions from that row? Proceed to the next row. Yes, sir, was out over there.
Hi, excuse me. I'm Jason Dyer. Uh I like to call myself, I'm the oldest four-year-old. I've had three, uh two careers. I'm working on my next two. Um I've been a, I've been a stay-at-home dad for the last six years and I find myself comfortably nestled into the sandwich generation. Um my father-in-law is sixty-seven years old and he should settle, he'll pay for everything. What that means is I'm really concerned when I learn that Grand Prairie Fire will not transport him to Parkland or if he were part of Tarrant County, it's J P S. I understand the logic and I absolutely applaud the termetic program of where we are with the skill and the talent that they have. Something like that would, but if, if Kurt Eager had to go to the hospital, I'm having to pay for private, private emergency transport or something like that. It breaks my entire holidays. I don't understand why that burden of safety for people with no money to get to these types of places is put directly on us. And I'd like to know what factors need to be considered for you guys to repeal that decision to ignore those people? Because that's what it feels like to me.
So the, the reason they did you go to Parkland, I'm just curious.
Absolutely. And Jim is part of the county, uh and one of the, all of this healthcare comes through there. He's got a, had a early some procedures.
So we have eight ambulances. You probably, you and I probably talked to the person. We have eight ambulances covering a long, narrow city and about two-hundred-and-ten thousand people. We don't even have a hospital in Grand Prairie. So we have a policy that we transport, as you know, to the closest, most appropriate. So if you are, if you've had a cancer treatment or surgery, even if it is a partner, we will take you back because that is the most appropriate for your treatment. We are not allowed by law to make decisions on transport on financial or insurance reasons.
So do I understand it correctly that if they're already set up within that system, that's where all their primary care is, that that would be the most appropriate? Is that correct?
That would not be. We cannot bypass, because Arlington Memorial M C A would be the closest, most appropriate. Unless it's a super specialty medical condition, which obviously we, we can't expand on it here.
Sure.
Uh I know it is not the best. I feel complaints over this uh quite a bit.
Is there a way to tally those, get some thoughts together and help you guys change your minds on this? Because this is literally the, uh, uh, it's extremely, exquisitely important that these people have access to that.
Yeah, is this policy for the city of Kansas? This is from us, the department, because if we, with our eight ambulances, if one went to Parkland, one went to St. Paul, one's in J, one's in J P S, you see, they're gone for two and a half hours. So it, it becomes a challenge. But also remember, all of our reimbursement to your Medicare, Medicaid or insurance, we bypass a hospital that is appropriate, deny claim. So we've got all kinds of dilemmas going on, federal level, state level, with C M S and Medicare. If we decide just, we're just gonna take someone to Parkland because that's where they wanna go, we bypass three hospitals, there's an eight-hundred-dollar bill that someone's gonna pay.
I think there's a misinterpretation with uh with the terminology used there with want. Um I don't, a person in my father-in-law's condition does not, it's not about want, there's these out of choices. I got this, it's on base.
I wish I had a better answer for you. I think this is something we probably need to have an all-in-one conversation. Because the fix would be four more ambulances.
Amen. Let's go.
Maybe if you got three million dollars, I'll take it.
We'll, we'll come back and make sure we get everybody before standing.
I got two more things here, just real quick. Uh the first question I have is, have we ever had or do we intend to, intend to create a cycling master plan for the city of Grand Prairie?
Um I'm not privy to that information. I would have to get with our transportation director. I will get back to you on that question.
They say cycling. Cycling. Yeah, so we're, we're looking at options. Most of our cycling uh traffic right now is down on our southern sector. We're looking at options on the bridges. We're also looking at, at options. This is underway on marking some of our existing roadways with a bicycle designation. Uh so, so we're looking at both of those kind of separately, but at the same time. And then as we redo Main Street, we're uh gonna redo that roadway to a two-lane, one-lane each direction. We, we didn't have bike lanes in there. So all of our future roadways at that time, we're trying to leave that capacity. For example, we're gonna be spending about thirty-five million dollars on a new Shady Grove Road between Belt Line and George Bush. And that will have sidewalks on each side for cycling. So very top of mind, we're working on it. We're a little bit behind the, the, the curve on that. So be patient with us. But yeah, it's, it's on our radar.
I, I hope that you guys are able to uh follow the, the pedestrian traffic trends like District Two, District Three downtown. We're seeing a ton of people on bikes, on scooters, on motorized cycles, things of that nature. Uh and the very last thing, I beseech everybody on the council, every person in leadership of the district, to help teach citizens how to present and write resolutions for a nonpartisan entity in such a way that I can be seriously considered. Uh is there anything like that? I, actually, the closest thing I saw was there was a video that came out today that uh about three minutes of how to do business with the city. And to most information, you have one spot that I haven't got one shot. So is there something like that that you guys can do?
Not, we, we don't have that program in at the moment, but the great thing is voice that some of them can definitely do in the future to allow residents to be more engaged and involved with our city government. So if we can get together after this, we can speak about it and find a way for it. So thank you for that question. Yes, ma'am.
Uh one thing I've always loved about Grand Prairie is the nature. The parks, Michael's Park was good when I was in high school and I thought it was just the meanest, keenest thing ever. My question is, with everything going on, what is the city doing or is it even on the city's mind for in re-estateing native plants, like made of pollinators, things like that, that would help with runoff and stuff during drought season? That are drought-resistant, things like buffalo grass and turkey tangle, things like that are made up to Grand Prairie. What is uh, is that a plan to include that more in our parks and encourage our citizens to use them as lawn replacements? Um and you know, is the environment even considered when Grand Prairie is doing its planning and it's, um any notions moving forward?
The envi- the environment is definitely considered whenever we're making our planning uh moving forward for sure. Those specific plans that you listed out, I don't have any documentation at the moment in front of me as to whether that's something that we discuss and look forward to. But it's something that we can incorporate. And I'll have to speak with my parks director before giving you a pledge on it if you can do it going forward, but that's something we can look at.
I think I can go, I think I can go a little further. The answer is yes, except on the residential side. We have nothing planned to mandate resident, private property owners. But instead of getting public works in parks up here, I can answer it this way. A few years ago, we implemented what's, what's called a clean prairie philosophy. And we're now doing that with public art. Every time we look at a project, whether it's parks, streets, flood, flood plain, drainage, stormwater, we have this clean prairie, nature-based philosophy in our planning processes. And again, we're now incorporating public art because that's, those are quality of life issues. So it's a very holistic approach. And so the answer is yes. You're spot on. We've got to, as Carla was saying, we've gotta guard these precious resources. So yes. So, yes, we've taken a very, uh, uh, philosophical approach on every, we want that to be our mindset on every project.
Is there, is there a way that AGB encourage for people to, to use the, for example, black eye seasons are actually native to North Texas, but when plant wild and allowed to go peril in the yard, it could be something that could be considered uncounted, but it's natural. Would there be a way that code compliance, like I was talking about earlier, be able to identify those things? And make it so that I'm not having to mow over my flowers that I put there specifically for the bees.
Sure, sure.
I live right by Colgate Park and it has a lot of green nature and I love it and I don't ever want to see it go away.
And then also, we've got to keep Grand Prairie beautiful program as well. But, oh, yeah, so the answer is there's going to be times that our code compliance officers will probably be out there and to them, it's going to look a lot like Tall Johnson grass. Because some of those are very similar. I've noticed, I'm like, hey, that doesn't look good, and I realize it's nature scape. They are educated on this. However, they're still evolving. So if you run across a situation where you or a neighbor believes that, hey, this is a native, they'll, they'll call the timeout and then pause and get with us. So we have been educating them on this, but it, but we're not probably quite there yet because this is a relatively new approach. So, yeah, we're very open to learning more about that. If, if, again, if there's a particular problem on us.
Yeah, because I, whenever I first bought my home, when I finally, you know, looked at Perry and came back with a reason, I had a native plant and I had a neighbor get a little upset with me about it looked uncounted. I ended up ripping it out just so we could just walk up the beat. But I want to see more things. I, Grand Prairie is a wonderful place. And I want my nieces and nephews to be able to grow up and know its beauty in a single area.
Well, I, I challenge you to go online, learn more about our Keep Grand Prairie Beautiful program. Contact, uh, Dr. Redfern. If you want to get involved, we'd love to have your input. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
I, I want to know about the short-term rentals. Usually the parking isn't done until the Friday. And so that's all weekend. So how can we prevent that? You know, it's not going the week so much, it's the weekends where the parking is out front and they're not using the rear, uh, uh, parking. Our, our street has rear-end, um, parking.
You have an alley in your street?
Yeah, we have an alley. So they're all on the streets, both sides of the streets. How do we prevent that when it starts happening Friday afternoon to Sunday?
I think the first, the first thing is to contact council member, contact staff and let us know that it's, it's occurring.
It's on the weekend now. It's Friday afternoon.
Oh, no, you can call me. Call me whenever. My card is back there. It should be a text. Call me whenever. We'll get on it immediately. We have staff that works throughout the week. But our, uh, director, I'll let him speak.
Well, while we don't have code officers that work at night and on the weekend, our police department, as you know, works 24/7. So if you do see an issue that comes up on the weekend or night, call our, our, uh, police department or non-emergency number or 911 if it's an emergency, and they'll have a patrol officer go out there and take care of it right then.
Okay.
Let me add, please don't hesitate to call 911. You all are so respectful. Well, we don't want to tie those operators up. They're all sitting in the same room. You're not, it's okay, because a lot of people can't remember the non-emergency number. They'll, when they know it's a non-emergency, if an emergency comes in, they'll put you on hold. But it's okay to call 911. I don't want you to call council members on the weekends and nights. And here's why. They're responsive, but that, that's going to take, uh, longer to, to get your problem solved. 911 gets to it immediately. So we want to get you immediate assistance.
Thank you.
Good point, good point. Um, we have any other questions on that row? We'll go to the next row. Yes, ma'am.
I have a question about fireworks. I don't know how many citations were given during this Fourth of July holiday.
Yes, ma'am.
There's, there were many fireworks, but no, no, and I'm not really sure how many citations were given.
Yeah, so. Steve says he had to leave. He had to go to address the citizen police academy, so he apologized us. Uh, the fire chief is behind you. Get with him after the meeting. We've got all those numbers and we will email them to you. So we've got all those. Uh, I'm really proud of police and fire. They partner. And Robert, you want to talk a little bit about how you have firefighters out there with the police officers this year? And this year, let's mention our library, uh, quiet facility that we.
Yeah, we did open up a library as a park facility. We know there are children and adults who have challenges with the noise and it just allows us. Uh, but this year, we put our firefighter inspectors, who are also police officers, with a police officer in a car and dedicated them to those firework calls. It was hard to cover the entire city because, as you can imagine, there were thousands of, of calls as far as fireworks, like hundreds. And the other hundreds, sure. Uh, but I will give you those numbers exactly.
And ma'am, keep in mind, you're going to see a lot of fireworks calls and not that many citations. That's a classy misdemeanor. The officer has to catch them in the act. Okay, he can't just go up there later, we, we think you were doing or we see fireworks there. It's a very difficult citation to write because we have to actually observe it. So it's really more of a prevention. Uh, and, and every year, we've tried to ramp up and do more and more, but it's a big problem. I mean, it just really is that we just really don't have the resources to always sound pop up.
Can video be used to prove that something happened or is this just not even allowed?
So if you're a citizen and you videotape somebody using fireworks and you're willing to sign an affidavit and we can actually identify who that person is, we have to make positive identification. If we didn't as a police officer see it, you have to agree to sign an affidavit. We can absolutely write a citation in those cases. Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you for your question. So it is eight o'clock now, and so we will have to end this town hall. But I will be back here. We'll have staff here for a few minutes that can ask us questions, um, before you guys go home. So I'm sorry they weren't able to get everybody's questions. Um, but please stick around and feel free to ask us questions, uh, while we're still, still here. Thank you for coming out tonight. We appreciate y'all.